Everybody, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is July 27th, Thursday, July 27th, 7:00 PM or just a few minutes after. We are meeting at the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room. First item on our agenda tonight is 44 Clare Pond Road. This was previously a public hearing, and we closed the public hearing at our last meeting. And our discussion is to complete the draft of our final approval of the subdivision and a covenant. So I believe all Planning Board members got a copy of that in their email.
There was one change that we've made, is that the streetlights is not a waiver. The streetlights are shown in the revised drawing, so you had discussed that at your last meeting. So Kathy's going back to get the revised draft. We printed them out, but they're under desk, so.
Oh, this one?
Yes.
Alright.
Just in case it's any other.
So anyway, at this time, I'd like to walk through what we have in front of us with the Planning Board. Does anybody have comments on this document? Basically, we're looking at its language to show that it meets the required zoning. It's going to be filed with the town clerk. The conditions of approval are, as of tonight, July 27th, it was voted to approve the above referenced definitive subdivision, which is 44 Clare Pond Road, by Derek A. and Madeline J. Maxey of Webster Realty Trust. Said definitive plan is a subject of the following conditions. Number one, prior to the board's endorsement of this approval, on the definitive subdivision plan, the subdivider shall secure its completion by executing a covenant with the board. Lots 1, 2, and 3 shall be subject to the covenant. No lot may be sold until (a) the street work and associated improvements detailed on the approved definitive plan have been completed and inspected in accordance with the subdivision regulations; (b) the board is in receipt of an irrevocable letter of credit, cash, or tripartied agreement in an amount agreed to by the board as necessary to secure the completion of the work and associated improvements for the lots where construction is proposed; and a lot release Form K will be endorsed by a majority of the board indicating the drainage system is complete and the roadway construction with its base course of asphalt, the Form K must be recorded at the Registry of Deeds Land Court. Item two, all work covered under the performance guarantee shall be completed to the satisfaction of the Planning Board prior to the release of such guarantee. Final release of performance guarantee shall occur after street acceptance. The applicant shall pay for the cost of the inspection of the road, drainage, and utility construction. The cost of final inspection shall also be paid for by the applicant. Item four, the applicant must obtain all applicable approvals and permits for the stormwater drainage prior to the commencement of any construction. Five, the applicant or successors are required to maintain the drainage system until the street is accepted by the town. Swales and basins shall be cleaned yearly, or more often if required by the operations and maintenance plan, and prior to acceptance. In the event of a maintenance failure, the applicant shall be provided notice and the reasonable opportunity to cure such deficiency. The applicant's failure to cure such deficiency in maintaining the drainage system will be considered a violation of this approval. Six, construction of the proposed ways and services shall be limited to 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Saturdays, and no work shall be on Sundays or federal and state holidays. During construction, all local and state and federal laws shall be followed regarding noise, vibration, dust, blocking of town roads. The applicant shall at all times use reasonable means to minimize inconvenience to residents in the general area. Seven, during construction, the applicant shall keep Clear Pond Road clean and free of dirt and mud. Eight, the approval by the Planning Board of this plan shall not be treated as nor deemed to be approval of the Board of Health for a permit for the construction of any use on any lot of any individual sewage system. No building or structure shall be placed on any lot without all applicable approvals and permits from the Board of Health. Nine, there shall be no construction other than shown on the approved plans unless Planning Board or its representatives shall have reviewed and approved such change. Ten, approval of the Conservation Commission is required. Eleven, the streets shall be, this street shall be a public roadway. Twelve, the final inspection and a stamp as built will be provided by a licensed civil engineer as well as all conditions written on the plan. Thirteen, the definitive plan, covenant, and its approval letter shall be recorded either at the Registry of Deeds or the land court. Three copies of this endorsement, definitive plan, and all recording information shall be provided to the planning office. Fourteen, any proposed changes by the applicant, his successors, or assigns from the approved plans deemed substantive by the town officials shall be submitted for review to the Planning Board. The board shall determine if there is a need for a public hearing and shall then act accordingly on the changes. All approved revisions shall be illustrated on the applicable sheets within the plan submitted to the planning department. And it goes on to have a signature block for the Planning Board after we vote on this document. Something that me and Mark talked about earlier today was not for the definitive plan, but for just this document, if the Planning Board would consider making the chairman be the only one required to sign it rather than all five members, but the definitive plan would still be required to be signed by all five members. This is just for approval to go to the town clerks for the 21-day appeal period, and after that, if there's no appeal, then we would then sign the Mylar Plan, all five.
The reason for that is sometimes during the discussion, we add a condition, we modify something, so that way I can make the changes on the computer, I can include the actual vote into the text, and then...
There are some things on this that still need to be filled in, which we're not at a computer and a printer now.
Exactly.
So if we vote on this, then the actual vote will be recorded, in favor or opposed, and then any other blanks that need to be filled in, or anybody chooses for an amendment now, that would be done at the office, and then the vote be carried out, well, the vote be carried out here, but then I would execute the signing only.
But you would execute the signing after any changes are approved by the board?
That's correct.
Well, if we make the changes now...
No, because I heard you guys say in discussion, there could be some changes.
Well, there could be changes like tonight to one of those conditions. I would then go to the office tomorrow, Monday, make the changes.
No, I understand that, but between then and the document...
No, no, no.
There are no changes. No, no, it would be whatever changes the board decides prior to the vote, so.
Yeah, that would be tonight.
After you vote, there's no changes.
If I may, Mr. Chair, aside from the document, because the last meeting wasn't recorded by Lakeham and I wasn't here, just as like a little recap, so they went from a two-lot subdivision to a four lot, and now it's down to three.
And just to be clear, that didn't all happen at the last meeting?
Right, right.
That's collectively over the last six months.
But the last meeting, it went from four down to three.
Correct.
And this is the first we're seeing of the three-lot plans. So the golf course remains on Lot 2. Lot 3 is a proposed house lot, and Lot 1 is just to remain as a solar field.
Correct.
Yeah, if there's a little further discussion in this revised draft, I have a paragraph about the, which was not in the emailed version.
And then my question on number 11, that it's going to be a public roadway, was that always the intention? I don't recall that. I know we had talked of this being a large business zone property, and we wanted the road to meet those standards, but I don't recall it being proposed as a public roadway.
I don't specifically recall if it was, that specific question was asked by any Planning Board members, but I know we didn't discuss a homeowners association type of thing as if it was always intended to be a private way either.
So this would still have to go to town meeting for approval if it were?
Yeah, my understanding is that the intent was always to have it accepted as a public way, even though that portion didn't come under great discussion. We did discuss more of the structure of the road, or the issues with some of the lot lines, and set back things because of the solar panels, and that's why some of those boundaries changed.
No.
John?
I'm good.
Hello?
Oh, okay.
Did you want to amend anything within the conditions, Michelle?
I'm just looking through this revised version right now, real quick.
What paragraph did you add, Mark?
The bottom of the first page, where it starts, the site is located at 44 Clare Pond Road, and from there right up to this section of waivers, those two short paragraphs. And then at the bottom of waivers, I added the, remove the streetlight from the waiver requirements.
Okay, so as you see in the last paragraph, Planning Board hereby certifies that the above subdivision entitled Golfer's Way has been voted definitive subdivision approval, and then that blank space is where our vote would be recorded, whether it's 4 to 1, or 5 to 0, or whatever. And then, so I guess I'll make a motion to amend the signature blocks of the document so that only the chairman needs to sign this document for approval to the town clerk's office. Second, have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, so that will be the only amendment that we make to this document. And so I now make a motion for the Planning Board to approve the certificate of approval of the subdivision plan. Second, have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Can I take a question from you ladies? So the golf course from Lot 2, I heard Michelle say, is there anything in this discussion or your vote that deals with the golf course being sold to another party for use of a warehouse?
There's nothing in here that, that's nothing to do with the Subdivision Control Act.
That could still happen.
Not through what, not through this action that we took tonight, but technically that could still happen, that could have still happened if we didn't do this. But I just want to be cautious to be clear, we did close the public comment portion of this hearing, and I'm happy to answer your question, but I just don't want it to devolve into, we can't rehash out the plan, it's in a good state right now, but like I said, we did close the public hearing portion of that. That said, board has approved that. So that concludes everything regarding 44 Clare Pond Road at this point, right?
This is chairman's floor, I'd like to thank you for your time, I spend here every other week, and that's a lot to do, and I appreciate that.
After email. So the next item on the agenda is a similar document for Stowe Estates, 35 Myrick Street. We have another certificate of approval of the definitive subdivision plan, and this document is in the same form as the last one we had, different conditions, different Did everybody get a chance to look through this? And Mark, was there any specific edits from the email copy that we had earlier?
I don't believe I made any edits to what I emailed out to the board.
Did anybody have any comments on this one?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do. We, so under waivers, they're still looking for 14 waivers. I'm glad to see that they are doing the underground utilities, but...
You had been pretty vocal about that, and when I had done the research to find out that only one subdivision in the past 10 years had above ground wiring, and it was because it was preexisting, so I felt like that was spot on to do that.
Okay, but so my concern is still no sidewalks, knowing there's going to be sidewalks up and down, majority of Route 79, after the expansion project. I think the traffic's going to fly down there faster, we know there's an industrial zoned section that, and also highway access. I just, you know, Planning Board must be concerned with pedestrian safety, and for me, having children in these houses walk, you know, up 750 feet, plus that if you're at the end, you're at 1,100 feet, walking up, especially in the dark, when it's winter time, icy, narrow road, I just, I feel like we're just not doing a service to the future residents of those homes by not including sidewalks, and I just think 14 waivers is quite a bet still. So that's, that's the one I'm just, I'm not...
Can we even go back into this one, if we want to stick around?
Well, let's discuss.
I mean, it's...
No, I know we can discuss it, but I don't think we can make a change on it with this one.
Look, it's no longer a public hearing, so can't really take explicit any kind of comments. You know, if you have a specific question of the engineer or the applicant, you can ask that, but pretty much you have to limit your discussions to this document, so.
Right, I guess the legal question is, can we change a waiver, or remove a waiver from this now?
Because you haven't voted, yes, you can't. That's right. Just like you can add a condition or modify a condition.
Yes. So I'm indifferent to that, I think Michelle makes a fair argument, and I would say if the board as a majority thinks that it should have sidewalks, then so be it. Jack, do you have a comment?
I think in the last meeting, we talked about there's no elevators.
No, this is a different...
No, this is Stowe Estates.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This is the subdivision of Route 79.
Number two.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Laura, do you have a...
I'm kind of like you, I'm a little bit indifferent to it, however, understanding what we're looking at with the town, I would be more inclined to require sidewalks.
I mean, I think the sidewalks would be nice, I don't know if it's imperative after the three, three houses, like that, at the street.
Jack, do you have any input on this?
No.
Do you have a recommendation, Mark?
Well, it is just the three-lot subdivision, and I know sidewalks will be on 79.
Is that, that's not even going to go that far, though.
Well, that's what I'm not sure, just that, whether it's...
I don't think that that Route 79 project goes past...
No, it's not. But that doesn't mean it can't be eventually.
Pre-60.
I don't think it matters whether it's three homes or 16 homes, it's a matter of really safety for the residents in that, those homes.
Exactly.
As they move about.
Generally, I agree on larger projects, I mean, I really do think that they should, especially if they connect to something, but for a three-lot subdivision, we have lots of small private roads in this community without sidewalks, and so a lot of common I've heard in the past is, aside from some major roads, that a lot of people don't really block sidewalks, so, unless they connect places.
I haven't heard that.
So, I mean, I'm not opposed to, yet some towns do require every subdivision, regardless of size, to have sidewalks, so I'm usually quite a proponent of sidewalks, but for three-house lots...
I guess I look at it as, 14 waivers is very lenient, and you could go either not grant the sidewalk waiver, or not grant the streetlight waiver as one or the other, just to either illuminate the roadway because it will only be three families using it, but at least any pedestrian would be able to see with streetlights?
I think we eliminated the, we said yes to the streetlight waiver in lieu of they agreed to put the light, put lights on...
At the houses.
Something at the end of the driveways to the homes.
Yeah, but is there a condition for that?
Yes, so there's a condition, number...
That is a false.
Number eight, it says, "Each owner shall maintain on its lot a single-post mounted lantern-type exterior light fixture. The fixture shall be a dark-sky compliant LED fixture. Said lights shall be placed to illuminate the entrance of the driveway servicing the lot." So, you know, there will be some illumination.
I think that if that's the case, and that's the concession for sidewalks, that there should be a distance that that light not go any further than from the roadway. We should probably call that out in that condition, to ensure that there's no misinterpretation that they are lighting their driveway, that the intent is to light the end of the driveway and the roadway.
Mm-hmm.
So that street, that pole light be within...
The cottage is...
10 feet of the property line?
At La Barron, this is the same issue we had at La Barron, and the pole light on the lawn is only 15 feet from the, from the street, and it's well illuminated.
10 feet from the, from the lot line, the property line, not, not obviously edge of road, because then they'd be putting it on the common, I guess that's a parcel, rather than their own property, and so they'd be required to maintain it if it was part of their own lot, but within 10 feet of the lot line.
So in light of that, is it a direct recommendation that we move waiver number eight and the requirement of sidewalks? Is that what we're saying? Because we removed the waiver for streetlights.
We allowed the waiver.
Right, and in lieu of that, we don't want to grant the waiver for the, not having to be required to have sidewalks. We want it to be required to have sidewalks.
No, I thought the whole thing about putting the lights at the end of the driveway was now to illuminate the road enough so they didn't need sidewalks.
No, I just, I looked at it as an illumination of the area, not in replace of sidewalks.
And it doesn't do anything for a child standing at the corner of this cul-de-sac in Route 79 in the darkness at 6:00 AM while people are barreling down there, a brand-new road widened on their way to work.
Okay, sidewalks, everybody okay with sidewalks?
Mm-hmm.
We're not granting the waiver for sidewalks.
Okay, I'll move that down as not being granted.
to the road?
Well, I think you should, if you're not going to have street lighting, you should still require...
Okay, so the only change is really just, we're not granting the waiver for sidewalks is the only change then?
Yeah.
Or you're keeping the 10 feet?
Yeah, I'd say keep the 10 feet if you're gonna, it's clearer to specify, just so someone doesn't stick it halfway up the driveway and claim that that's their entrance, and you get an argument.
Okay, so we have two changes to the document, does anybody else have anything?
Give me one minute to... Someone have a copy of the drawing for this property? Do you have some copies?
I think I have one in my car, do you need one?
Yeah, I just want to check the location of the drainage and how the sidewalk would work, just to see if there should...
I have it here, I believe.
Okay. So they should be able to install a sidewalk on the, what would be the kind of the north side of this, where the homes are, because it looks like the drainage... Because it looks like the drainage swale is on the... On the side, yes.
Yep.
Okay. Just want to make sure it doesn't majorly affect the drainage design.
It'll be like in lieu of like one of the two-foot gravel.
What?
Two-foot, so it'll be in lieu of one of the two-foot gravel, right? Don't they have, aren't they doing two-foot gravel inside?
I still have...
They'll still have the gravel, two-foot gravel shoulder, but they'll have to install an asphalt firm and then a raised sidewalk of five feet wide along that side up to the...
They have plenty of distance within the right of way.
Right. And the swale is on the other side of the street. It looks like they've kind of super elevated the roadway, so...
Are we going to require that change to the plans before we sign it, or are we gonna...
Yes, they'll have to make, so we'll put it on in the approval. I'll write it into the condition into the approval, but they will have to make a change to the drawings to get signed.
Okay. So, does anybody else have any comments or changes for this?
I'm just double checking here, because I know there was concerns from residents about water. I just want to make sure that this is strong enough that if there is an issue with water down the road, that it'll be properly addressed. And is there anything other than number 16 that really deals with that?
Actually, it was addressed within conservation commissions.
Oh, yeah.
Noticement intent.
Okay.
So...
Was there a condition added to that?
A condition for operations and maintenance and no snow plowing into the retention pond. There were a few things that they added to it.
Okay.
So, that carries in perpetuity with that approval.
I'm on board with those changes.
Okay. So, that said, I make a motion for the planning board to approve the certificate of approval of the subdivision plan for Stowe Estates, 35 Myrick Street, with the changes of no waivers for sidewalks and the clarification of the pole lights to be within ten feet of the property line on item number eight. And that with approval, that the chairman be the only one that needs to sign the approval certificate. I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on our agenda is a continuing public hearing for 13 Main Street. Welcome back.
Thanks, James. So, since the last time we met with you, we were, the plans had been sent out to EP for review. We got the comments from them last Thursday, Friday, end of last week. And we made up the required changes and smoothed them back to the board today and sent them electronically to EP as well. The letter was four pages, but a lot of the comments were that they were in agreement before we had done. So, if you'd like me to quickly, it probably would take me two minutes if you'd like me to go over all of them.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Mark.
Sure. So, they had three separate comments where there's a section on this side of this building where we had a small section of grass area that flowed onto the abutting property. So, they asked us to look into that. And then in their final comment, they suggested that we take this area and grade it so it all ends up in the infiltration basin. Now, just to explain why we didn't do that, this is a very large area in existing conditions of bare ground that now sheds onto this property. So, there was a significant reduction in rate that was going onto this property. But since we got three of the same comment in the letter, we figured it made sense to let's redo a little bit of regrading, and we'll take all of this flow all the way from the property line and bring it down into our infiltration basin. What it did is that what the change that it made to the infiltration basin is in the hundred-year storm event went up, I believe, one one-hundredth of an inch or one-tenth of an inch. It's a very small amount. We submitted those calculations back in the letter response, and it literally did change it. We still had it for the free board in the infiltration basin. Regardless, we had a little bit more than before. So, that's three of the comments they had. They asked us to provide calculations showing that the infiltration basin and the subsurface infiltration chambers drain within 72 hours. We gave them the hydrographs for the hundred-year storm, and it shows that they drain in less than 36 hours. I think in the worst-case scenario, we had one that was 33 hours, so well under the 72 hours required. They asked us to confirm groundwater with a new test pit. We had a test pit close to this infiltration, proposed infiltration chamber structure up here, but they wanted one right in it. So, we went out there and last week, the beginning of this week, excavated that test pit. Yeah, show where it is on this plan, included the test pit log in the plans and the detailed sheet of the plans. And they dug down 13 feet and did not see any, this is just about the highest spot on the site.
No indication of any?
13 feet, no indication of groundwater, so groundwater is well below our system that we proposed there. They had two comments on stabilization. We have a couple that indicated these lines are contour lines, and when you seal out them together, that means it's a slope. So, they asked us to, they asked us about the stabilization, and I'm not sure if they didn't see, but we had stabilization measures included on the erosion and sedimentation control plan. I pointed them to those, but they also had a comment that it didn't say anywhere that they were to be permanent. So, included a, of course, they're intended to be permanent. We've called out for, we have a few spots, we have one-to-one slope, we called out for riprap, and that certainly is permanent. But to satisfy their comment, I added notes to the erosion control plan that all stabilization measures are to be, remain as permanent fixtures. They, so that's another one, second one. We had two incorrect grate elevations, rim elevations on these two drainage manholes. So, we thanked them for pointing that out, and we revised those and fixed that. They asked for, in these subsurface structures, that we put an inspection port, which is just a little handhole that you can actually see down, make sure it's infiltrating. So, we've added that to the detail sheet. We've added those inspection ports that they asked for. They asked about the water. The water comes from an adjacent property and is stubbed, currently stubbed at the property line. And they just asked about that, number one, what had been put in place for that. And there's a permanent easement on this property for the purposes of this property and that the water department to be able to maintain that eight-inch water main. And they asked about whether or not the town water department was aware of that, and yes, they are. They're fully aware of that, and that's...
And just for clarification on that, that was done in coordination with the town water department. So, in the future, no one would have to break into Route 105 to tap into the water line.
And then the last comment they had was that at the front of the property, essentially at the property line, we have a trench grate, and that's because our property is higher in elevation than Route 105 and Main Street, so...
Can't discharge that water, okay?
Exactly. So, they didn't, don't like trench grates, but unfortunately, essentially, they're required by the DOT. When we're draining water towards a state highway, we have to collect that water, all of it, and bring it back into the property and do something with that. So, we could slope the road to one side and put catch bases in, but then you would end up with a large portion, you'd have a large triangular section like this that would be draining into the road. They wouldn't allow it. So, we understand their comment. We've had dozens of projects that drain into the road.
The issues that they had with it, though, was the maintenance and the clogging, right? When I read through...
My comment is, we just haven't seen, we haven't had any problems with that. If properly maintained, there should be no problem.
Is that called out in the operations and maintenance of the drainage?
Yeah. One of the ways we get around that is you see, we have that trench grate and drain, and it drains directly into a drain manhole here. So, the drain manholes, where all any sediment that runs out of this is going to be collected here. So, yes, the operations and maintenance plan addresses getting the sedimentation out of the trench grate and instructually to examine it every two years by a professional engineer to make sure it's structured okay, and then removing the sedimentation from that, so...
On the property, as the state required it.
We have exactly the same thing right next door, and it was required there by DOT, so... We agree with every comment they had, and we've already taken care of everything that they've asked for, except for that one, just because we know DOT is going to require it if we try to get rid of it or do something different.
Yep. I did talk to the building commissioner, Bo. He thinks possibly because of the three stories and you have common hallways, you may, that might trigger architectural access boards' needs for elevators.
Yeah, like I said at the last meeting, I'm going to fully comply with all building code regulations.
Yeah, I think that's beyond building code. Once you have, like I said, it's three stories and common space or two stories, and you have to at least have ramps to the second floor if you have common space. That said, I understand that it's, we're not discussing building code here or AAB, but if, I guess if we made an approval, I would want a condition of the approval that if you were required to put elevators in, that we are shown that handicap parking is reasonably close to where the elevator needed to go. Just, you know, from a use standpoint, it seems that that would make sense. I think the fire chief would also want the same thing, so that if he had an ambulance spot that he needed to get to and they needed to bring somebody down in an elevator, that those two things weren't opposite ends of the building, so to speak.
Okay.
You know, and it's just, it's really, it's just, I'm looking at the handicap parking and someplace for an emergency vehicle to pull in that should be somewhat close to the elevators, if you do have to have them.
I'm 100% fine if the architectural control board or the building commissioner make the determination that that's required, that we come back to the board for maybe a minor alteration of resupplying handicap slots.
Yeah, I'm not looking to redo a site plan review as much as, if that happens, talk to Mark, amend the plan, and just have us, just we have the right plan on record, and you have the best possible flow for the side...
That makes sense.
Mr. Chair, if I may, why'd you brought that up? Because I was going to talk about that, because we're talking about common areas that is privy of the planning board to be involved in that. And I even want one step further in looking at, you talk about the architectural access board, and it's actually under 521 CMR 28.1, states that all multi-story buildings and facilities shall be served by a passenger elevator, and that starts at three floors and above. So, we would want, to Mark's point, be able to see where the handicap parking is located, the access areas for our first responders before we did any final sign-offs of this.
Could I just mention that handicap spaces are shown, and they have to be closest to the entrances of the, that's where they are?
Right, so I think, I think my point is make sure you don't talk the elevator in the background.
Right. The handicap, for site plan review purposes, our spaces are as close to the entrance as we can get them. For what you're talking about, that's a building code issue, and if, and Bo is aware that your concern is that the elevators be close to the entrance as well. So, for site plan review, we, I don't know what, for showing elevators wouldn't impact where we show handicap parking spaces. They're at the, as close to the entrance as possible. Where they put the elevator is going to be, you know, that's going to be relative.
Like you said, I understand that that's a bit out of our realm, but I just want to make sure that it's a consideration if that does happen. Like, it does seem like there is some literature out there that may require it, so... Michelle, did you have anything?
So, I thought we were going to get a peer review on the traffic study submitted, because there was...
We didn't talk about that.
There was a traffic study submitted, and it's using the senior housing component for their generation. I'd like a peer review done on that. We know that there was a fatality about 500 feet from this at Bridge Street, and I think that, you know, we shouldn't just take that lightly.
Okay. Does the board agree that we should have a peer review done on the traffic study?
Kind of different.
I think Jack and John, you kind of are...
Yeah.
Yes.
Either of you both voted no, there's a majority, so...
There's no...
Do you need an official vote on that, Mark, to do that, or is that...
Don't necessarily need that.
I think the...
But clarity, maybe.
All right, so make a motion to have the traffic study that we have in hand reviewed by environmental partners for whatever needs that that needs to be looked at for vehicular and pedestrian flow. I have a motion in a second for a peer review on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so get that done as soon as possible. Is there anything else that we have, seems like from outside of those two points? Pretty well cleaned up.
There could be one other issue related to the age restriction. So, age restrictions allowed by regulation by DHCD, which is downcalled something else. So, I'm checking with council to see whether it needs to be permanent, and because you indicated that you did not want to place a deep restriction on the...
So, I just want to make a clarification that we're not going through DHCD or... I forget their new name now.
Yes.
But we're not going through their age restriction approval process. We're simply following the Town of Lakefield bylaws, which is separate, and DHCD has something completely different. We're not going through DHCD.
I think we do need to have town council's opinion on this.
So, I've emailed her, so at least we'll have it in writing whether she still feels it's applicable. For some reason, I know you're not going through them for financing, but...
Or for any conditional approvals.
So, I will still get a clarification, because I know that's a good start.
And the number one clarification is age qualified and age restricted are two very different things.
All right, so I think based on that, we'll just need to continue until we get the results from the peer review on the traffic study. I'm sure we'll hear from council way before that.
Yes.
You'll get that to environmental partners as soon as possible.
We'll get an estimate, and we'll send the thing over, and we'll give them the go-ahead to review it.
So, we're going to continue to our very next meeting. So, we're gonna continue to our very next meeting? And if those results aren't back yet, we'll take that as it comes?
Okay, so that wasn't in their original proposal? Cause we provided that traffic study with our original submitted.
Did that go to environmental partners?
I don't recall, I mean, it's been a while, so.
But the traffic study was submitted with the plans.
Should have gone, so I, I don't know, we'd have to check, so.
I remember your original submitted was 19 buildings, about 80 units. So the non-traffic between your original, I remember 19 units, and now-
John, is it John?
Yes, John Gregory.
Could I get you to come up to one of the microphones? If you want to address this, I want you to come up and state your name, just, either one, take your pick.
John Gregory, just a comment, just saying, original submitted included the traffic study, correct?
This submitted, included the traffic study, that's what he's doing.
So I'm not talking about the 19 buildings, so, my apologies.
Is there any other public comment? Uh, come on, Barbara.
Barbara Nankowski, 17 Johnson Drive. Um, you know, having served in the town, both on master plan and here on planning board, um, it's my opinion that we should be supporting ownership, not rentals. It concerns me deeply that we would have a three-unit building for age-restricted homes that does not have, um, an elevator. I'm getting up in age, and I'm in my mid-50s, and I can tell you that three flights of stairs is a long way to go, um, after you've done, uh, the living that I've done. So I am concerned about that. Um, and I think it's, you know, we'll snit, we're gonna sandwich this place in between, I think it's going between a storage unit and a funeral home. I mean-
CVS?
Okay, in between the funeral home and the CVS, storage and CVS. Yeah, so I just hope that it has appropriate buffers, so that the people that live there don't, you know, feel so sandwiched in between what is otherwise appearing to be a business district. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
And deed restriction, I think, would be nice if we're gonna have it age-restricted.
So I guess it would be good if we found out that, that traffic study already went, cause Scott Turner, but I-
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I apologize, it didn't go.
It wasn't on the proposal. It didn't go, it was not in the proposal.
Okay.
All right, we'll get it out. Very good. So that said.
So I just wanted to, about the elevators. To me, if you don't put elevators in, you're discriminating against seniors that wanna live in that building. They might not, you know, be able to live in the first floor, because it's 88 compliant apartments, but they may have bad knees, bad hearts, bad whatever. And for them to have to go up three flights of stairs with groceries, you're looking at some major problems. Plus our firefighters, EMS have to go up three flights of stairs to take someone down. It's just, it's insane not to put an elevator in for supposed 55 and over. But in the bylaw, it says that it only has to have one person that's 55, which is kinda crazy, too. That needs to be changed.
Well, I don't know that there'll be, well, change, you know, you're closing the barn doors after the buses are out. That was something that was done probably 20 years ago.
Right, which probably should be looked into for future. And then my second point is, um, what's being done to control the dust on that property now? Today, the dust was flying across 105, it was like a dust storm. It almost looked like there was a fire.
Are you currently doing work there?
Not that I'm aware of.
The only thing that was done was the tussled E P one.
Yeah, that was-
I think it's just all the air land that's there right now, you know, with the winds we had today, it did look like there was a fire back there.
Yeah.
I would suggest we get a project in there, as being constructed as quickly as possible.
I figured that, yeah.
Is that the engineer?
Okay, that's, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Sue. Yeah, all right, so I make a motion to continue the 13 Main Street, uh, site plan review hearing until August 10th at 7:00 PM. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, see you then.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Uh, next item on our agenda is an A and R plan for 154 Rhode Island Road,
Mr. Chair?
I have a lot of questions on environmental.
Uh, Riverhawk, Dan Sturbe prepared the Form A plan for 154 Rhode Island Road, and I did not get a copy of that, I apologize. But I don't know if there's any questions or issues with the plan, it's just, uh, Form A, we're not creating any frontage. Just creating a new lot, which will be sold to the, uh, the-
Mark, that was pretty cut and dry, the Form A, right?
Yeah.
Way more than the minimum.
Yes.
Where it's required, it's, but more than 175 feet of frontage, and it certainly meets the 160-foot front yard circle.
I did have the site plan, I, yeah, you probably have that one electronic, did we have that?
Yeah, it's just a little.
Single page? So basically, you're joining the two projects.
That, the ultimate goal will be, will take the, the land that's, um, cut off of 154, uh, 154 Rhode Island Road, and it'll be joined with, uh, with, uh, 156 Rhode Island.
I wish the notes was just a little clearer. It says intended to be conveyed to the embodied property. It should be conveyed and combined with the embodied property, and should reference lots, but it does do that. Um, but yeah, but otherwise, it's the standard.
Yeah, so you're carving a parcel off.
Correct. Carving a parcel, not, not a built-up lot, but it's a, a lot to be joined with a body of property.
Right, but the lot you're carving it off of still remains a built-up lot. You haven't made that a non-conformity.
That's correct, the lot, the lot, it's, um, 154 will remain a con, a conforming, uh, lot, correct?
Uh, so I think to Mark's point, and we had sort of talked about this, that we definitely wanna see this, now you're gonna come back with another A and R, or how are you gonna show us that this becomes part of 156?
Um, the intent would be to be added by deed, but, um, you, you-
Well, I think that was just one of our requirements of, you know, you're asking, you're, you're meeting requirements for lot coverage by doing this, so we just wanted to see some, even if you just file that at the original deed, but show it conveying to Tyler.
Well, we can file an 81X plan that shows it as all one plan, doesn't, doesn't require-
Yep.
Planning board approval, cause we're not creating any new lines of ways. It's just, uh, shows those two lots as combined.
That's outside, yeah, we're trying to do it, I think that's-
Yeah, love it. We just wanna make sure that-
Yeah, yeah, no.
It is one lot as opposed to two lots under one ownership. And the note isn't that clear?
Okay.
So it's clear that Tyler is obtaining ownership of Parcel A, but it's, and, but it's not necessarily absolutely clear that it's all now one lot.
Understood.
So I think either adjusting this or filing the, the other plan is, would, would do-
Tyler set the clause on it.
Oh, I think, I think that this could serve the purpose for conveying, making it a parcel.
Yes.
And then in order for us to wrap up the site plan, we need you to fill out that form.
I mean, the other option is we could add to note tomorrow and bring it back for signature by yet, but like I said, we-
Close on Monday.
Close on Monday on it.
So he needs to record this?
Yeah.
Have, have the timer.
Like I say, I'm, I'm fine with it the way it is.
Yeah.
For the purposes of it becoming Parcel A in Tyler's ownership.
Yeah.
But like I say, for us to sign off on the site plan review, we need you to show that document that makes Parcel A become part of 156 Rhode Island Road, that then guarantees that his lot coverages are accurate based on what you're showing on the plan. And you, you meet all those requirements to not have to go through a big box.
Sure.
Thanks. So that said, are we okay with voting on this plan, has it drafted to form Parcel A and?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, everybody good with that? Any comments from the planning board?
I have a lot of questions.
Barbara?
Do you have a rail line A and R, I should talk about, um, tree buffers, and like that, the traffic studies?
Not on A and R. Good question. Uh, so, and basically, we're endorsing this plan as an A and R, so. Make a motion to endorse the approval of, uh, plan, approval not required plan for 154 Rhode Island Road.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. You're good there, file that at the Main Street deeds. Next item on the agenda, site plan review. I'm gonna get back to whatever my agenda was for 156 Rhode Island Road. So, you got us some plans today in email.
Very late today, yeah.
Uh, I didn't have a chance to review them, I talked to Mark about them earlier today. Um, I guess we had some concerns, we talked about some changes, um, and again, I'm, the plan I have is, it says 726 on it.
Yeah.
But it still shows a 60-foot opening. We talked about going down to 45.
Well, okay, so this, basically, I talked to Mark at 6:15 tonight, and I was the first I heard about the reduction in the size of the opening. And in our discussion today, he said that, that the planning board during the last meeting had a discussion and said they were gonna fit down to 45. But I pointed Mark to the fact that the zoning bylaws is that if you have one opening, it'd be 54 feet wide. So we invite to make it 54 feet wide, when we make that change, 45, 60, and 54.
He'll agree with that, he thinks he is correct. We did discuss, uh, and read through the section, which is 6.5.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I mean, as long as we're not doing something that's outlandish.
No, it's-
You know, it's, you have a unique circumstance, and it's certainly within the bylaws, we don't have a problem with that. We're not trying to make it any hotter on Tyler to do business there, we understand with the big trucks, it fits the project better. I, I talked to you, Barbara, we just wanted to hang our hat on something that worked and had some legal basis to it.
Yeah, I think the, the original reason why it was 30 feet is because, um, there were multiple entrances in the past, in the previous versions, and those would have had to been 30 feet. But now that he only has a single entrance, and it's a commercial slash industrial project, it's allowed to be 54 feet, so I'm just that.
That's fine. Uh, you and I talked also about some, some berms and other things, Mark, do you?
Um, yeah, well, we did, um, apparently, um, along Crooked Lane, there was a discussion about a burn along-
So, so we, we addressed that a little bit, we added a one-foot tall burn. We didn't go quite the, the 3 feet that was discussed. But there's a one-foot burn in the plantings we're proposing, um, can grow between five and 10 feet tall. So did we, figured we'd have to be a sufficient buffer along the roadway to the project.
And, um-
Was there anything else that we talked about that you felt was or wasn't addressed? From our, I don't remember all of our phone calls.
Again, yeah, um, I only, these only showed up today, so I haven't had the chance to go through them, but, um, I don't know if there's anything else you can-
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, what I did was I just prepared a brief, uh, letter of the, of the change, or a brief summary of the, of the changes, which is very simple, and I'll, I'll just go right through. So, uh, one of the comments last time, we didn't show the, um, industrial waste water holding tanks on the property, so we've now shown two tight tanks. Um, there is, um, in, whoa, that's, uh, not what I want. Um, they're basically, we added them to the, to the low, to the area here, and to the area right there. So, so those are now shown. Uh, the, the one, you requested, uh, Mr. Chairman, that, that existing building be labeled as accessory building, so we labeled that accessory building. Um, we performed a sweat cap analysis of the entrance to aid in your, um, review of that, so there was, we showed both entry and exit, in and out of that.
In both directions.
In both directions.
Yep.
Um, we had a discussion with Michael Ludo, Taunton Water Department, about the availability and the process for obtaining water. Um, he said he was gonna get me a letter, I did not receive it yet, about, that, that, yes, it is available, and it, um, the process for applying for it, but he said there should be no problem obtaining water from, sort of, Taunton. Um, there was some request for changing the, um, some of the plant species. There's, uh, trees shown at several locations on the site, and we had originally proposed, uh, Zalco, Japanese Zalcova. Uh, we switched those to be a native, um, uh, red maple is what we, we switched to. So those would be part of a large canopy shade tree, a very common shade, native shade tree, I guess. Um, we changed some of the, um, species of the, the plantings out front here, and we kept those as, as kind of a low, our intention is to keep it as a decorative, flowering, evergreen shrubbery.
Not obstructive, correct?
Yeah, that, that won't obstruct that corner, cause it, you know, it does give good site distances now across that from, in both directions, coming off Rhode Island Road and Crooked Lane, so we didn't want any elevated vegetation to be in the driver's, uh, driver's view path. Um, the, the lighting on the overall site, we made a lot less intense. I'm kind of learning how to do lighting design, and I made it a little too crazy at the beginning, but we reduced that down, and now it's, uh, it's, it's much better, there's all low, low intensity light across the site. And the zero spillover onto the, um, onto the embodied properties for road light. Uh, you requested, um, so based on some of our compats, that, excuse me, our comments, that we do a traffic impact assessment, so we hired a consultant, and he was able to squish that and get it done, and we saw that. The findings of that assessment, it is basically, uh, no impact, or no measurable impact on the adjacent roads or intersections from our, uh, first project. Uh, we added two additional dumpster locations in the area there and there. So, uh, there was two shown before, we just added two additional dumpster locations. We put those in areas that would hopefully be easy to help for the, um, for the trucks.
Are those on pads?
Those are pads, yep, so those are gonna be, uh, concrete pads with, with fenced in with dumpsters on top. And then, um, just, just in case in the future, I'm not sure, but Tyler might have some, uh, AC, uh, in his particular unit, so we did add two condensers on the, on the side of the building. I think that was all the changes we made. And then we did respond- And then we did respond. We submitted a response letter to Mark's comments, which he gave us at the last, at the last meeting, which most of those things were against him. And we did address all his comments. We didn't go quite as high on the burn, and we didn't change really too much of the vegetation at the intersection of Rhode Island Road and Crooked Lane. But short of that, we responded to all of that.
Do any, planning board members have any comments? Michelle?
This has come a long way, and I think you guys have gone above and beyond closing off the egress to Crooked Lane, adding, well, adding to your lot size to reduce a lot coverage. I'm happy with this.
I think you did a great job in listening to what the others were saying and implementing it.
Okay. So I'm happy with it. Um. That said, uh, because the plans came in so late, we'd just like to take the next two weeks to just check everything, but I think with what you've gone over just now, I think that satisfies everything. Uh, I guess my intent would be Tyler closes on that parcel A, and at the next meeting, can you come back with that form to show that those, his lot, 156 and the parcel A have been merged?
Yep.
So that at that point, if everything's been satisfied with, when we review the plans thoroughly, that we can close this out?
You change in the driveway to the right.
Yeah, well.
Fifty-four.
Drive it to 54. Yep.
I thought even the 60 is okay with.
Yeah, if 54 is in a bylaw, I think that we can stick with something that's, you know, within.
Yeah, I think 30 feet would not have worked, but I believe 54 will work.
Yeah.
Because they really are allowed to have that.
Yep.
Other entrance.
So do you think you'll be ready for August 10th?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll get these in very quickly, yes.
Super. Get them in by the Wednesday?
Yes.
All right. Uh, so I'm going to make a motion to continue the site plan review for 156 Rhode Island Road until August 10th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next item on the agenda is to discuss the open space bylaw that Mark's been working on. Did you grab copies of that?
I did not.
Okay, that's fine. I think at this point, I'd like to minimize discussion on that tonight, because Mark, was everybody in the board included in that?
Yes.
Okay, so you guys all saw, Mark circulated the latest draft. I'm going to let him talk to the changes he made, but it went out, most importantly, to Border Health and Conservation Commission. He and I will work towards setting up on their agendas to go and kind of do a presentation to make sure that they're satisfied if they do have, we really want to force out any comments from them, so it's not like last time on town meeting floor, and they sort of gave us the idea or support, then they walked that back. We don't want to waste our time, so we're just really going to push to try and get that vetted through those boards. Um, Mark, I'll let you go through the changes you made. I know some were Michelle's, and then most were come from.
Border Health. Border Health, yeah. So, so, um, one of the changes that Conservation had, actually they had two changes. One is they were concerned about multiple small parcels having to be accepted by the town or some conservation group and not really having the desire to do that. So we put in a 20-acre minimum for, so that at least there'll be a 10-acre parcel, which is fairly substantial of open space. The only exception to that would be is if the open space that's being proposed abuts an existing parcel of open space and can be combined and that entity desires to acquire that extra open space. So if Conservation already owns a parcel of open space, someone has 10 acres and would like to add the five acres of their open space and do a five-acre development, and if Conservation is willing to accept that extra five acres, they could do it on a 10-acre parcel instead of having 20 acres. Uh, so that addresses one of the two Conservation Commission issues. The second issue that Conservation had had to do with restricting the open space land under Article 97, so I inserted some language for that. Um, so that is quite clear. The open space land can't be reused in another manner without legislative approval. Um, that's what Article 97 does. It means it has to go back to the Massachusetts Legislature to be removed. Um, the changes, the concerns that we heard from the Board of Health was that if you have smaller lots and you locate both a well and a septic system on a smaller lot, if you're not super careful about where those are located, even if we require during the approval process to have general locations for well and septic, if they get shifted and moved, it could impact the development of the abiding parcels, which if one developer is building out the whole thing, he's going to be super careful not to do that, because he's going to want to sell every house. But if someone builds a road and sells off the lots, that could be a problem if they're developed individually by different homeowners.
And the wells weren't already drilled.
And the wells weren't already drilled, the septics weren't already installed. So, um, so in order to address that, we required one of two things. Either water is a public water supply, whether it's provided by Taunton, which provides a lot of public water in town, or a public water system, which is basically a privately run public water supply. Um, or, so either water is supplied, and then you can have private septics on each lot, or you do a common septic system or a sewer treatment plant, and then you can have individual wells on each lot. So, um, the areas of these common septic or, um, private water company locations would be excluded from the calculations for the open space. Um, so that should address that, that concern about, um, having, you know, wells and septic in too close proximity to each other. And so those are, those are the primary changes from, are basically all the changes from what we've discussed in the past.
Okay. So, I didn't want to delve too, too far into that tonight, because we're still going to wait for comments from those other boards, hopefully get some feedback that's positive or they accept the changes, and then we could discuss it at that point, just to make sure everybody's satisfied. So is everybody good with that approach for now?
Sure.
All right. So I'm going to move on then on the agenda, and I guess Kathy and Mark, as we get feedback from, or Mark, you know, I'll be of Conservation.
Yes.
Uh, but when we go to meet with those folks and then we get some feedback, we'll throw it back on the agenda to at least have a discussion back here.
Yep.
So keep that on the radar. Uh, discussion regarding the signed bylaw in commercial zoning districts. Has anybody put any work into that, or should that be something that we?
Um, I think the signed bylaw, we only carried it over because Cheryl wasn't here, and she had spent a regular time on it, and we don't want to vote without hearing from her.
Well, I think I had made some changes to the wording, and I sent it to you. I didn't know if you had had a chance to review it, what you thought.
Yeah, I thought it was fine.
Okay. Um, and so did everybody see it, I guess? Is the?
I think I overlooked it if it came to me.
Okay.
Or if it's been a while and I just.
Okay, so.
I could look back.
Two, three weeks.
Okay. So recirculate that?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And then put that on the agenda for the next meeting for the signed bylaw. Kathy? Uh, next item is discussion regarding subdivision waivers.
So. Um, I think we had talked maybe about trying to write a.
Tiered?
Yeah, like, uh, some towns have, they call it a family compound or some other types of state lot, um, where they, they specify the road design for like a three, up to three lots or up to four lots. They'll have a, just a small number of lots, and they'll have a specific road design and standard that they want to see, so that all of these private roads can all fall within something, you know, whether it's, you know, lantern lighting, but instead of that being in each driveway, it's a more traditional streetlight type lanterns, whether, um, you know, so that it's, they'll always be on as opposed to homeowners shut them off and stuff. Whether you want to have sidewalks on these things or not, it'll be decided ahead of time. So that builder, developer, homeowner will kind of know what that standard is going into the process, as opposed to asking a bunch of waivers, and sometimes you get some, sometimes you don't. Um, so again, that would.
So do we have like a template that we can?
Yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, there's a whole variety of bylaws that we can do, um, but it's, it's pretty much, um, most of the time, we can do it through subdivision rules unless you want to get into changing, um, lot, lot sizes, frontages, that kind of thing. Because some, some towns will do it, and they'll put it in the zoning, and some towns will make it, like you said, a tier within the subdivision rules and regs.
I think that it would make sense to do it within our subdivision rules and regs, because that's when we're going to be looking at it and implementing for those types of waivers. I guess to really effectively do this, I think that if you could find three templates of different tiered, I, you know, I guess I look at large commercial or industrial development as being.
Well, that's.
Everything's required.
Yeah.
Very, very few, or you'd have to, you could just not allow, you know, nothing would be allowed to be waived in that type of, and again, I'm not giving a good example of not, not everything would be waived or nothing would be waived as much as the requirements for 25-foot streetlight poles would be a standard. That's not going to get waived. That's a requirement.
Almost like there's major things that in that type of situation wouldn't be waived in the, almost like a minor set, you know, two differentiations between things.
Well, I think we're looking at probably three tiers, which would be maybe a road to be accepted by the town, and two different scenarios for that road to be accepted by the town would be a cul-de-sac or a through street. You know, if somebody had the ability to make a road connect to another road, you may want different standards or, you know, sidewalks or something, because it's going to be a walking road to go between. But those, those roads would have a standard, then these homeowner association three-lot subdivisions that we see would have different minimum requirements. Meanwhile, the big industrial commercial would have different requirements.
So this is what I would suggest, is that our subdivision rules and regs are, I don't know if there's a date on this copy I have here, but they're rather old.
1997.
They're rather old, and I don't believe they've been updated for many years. So this could be a project. Let's get through, um, what's required for if we're going to submit articles for town meetings, so, um, I don't believe the selectmen on Monday, they're going to set dates, so we may have to, um, but I think this would be a good project to go through.
May fall winter?
Yeah, but, and it's more than just setting some tiers. I think there's some procedural things. There's some other items in this that we ought to look at as well, so, um, but we could in, in looking at that, um, you know, set some of those standards for, you know, the minor streets is a lot of them, they call them minor streets, major streets, and then a lot of towns will have, um, like a commercial subdivision requirements, because largely, you know, just like at the industrial park.
Different animal.
You have different animal. You have trucks coming and going all day long, um, you know.
Sometimes in the night.
Right. And there should be regular streetlights. There should be a sidewalk. The road needs to be wider, even, even like a major roadway for a big subdivision, that roadway still doesn't need to be of the same standard as like an industrial park road.
Correct.
The paving standard could be even different, so.
Is this to like have like a subset of, I guess.
Hmm?
Allowances that you wouldn't need as many waivers for, like, like what we're doing?
Right.
Like we got 14 waivers, right? Is this to like say, well, these ones are given? Is that the idea of it?
Yeah, and then you also.
They're not waivers, they're just, they're, they follow these rules and regs and your these lower standards?
Yeah, and you get some more consistency in, in the design of what's your thing. I mean, there, every piece of land is different, so there may be some unique characteristics of the land or features, slopes, ledge, whatever, where you may have to grant some waivers for.
Right, correct.
Um, but for the most part, you know.
I agree. So at some point, we need to put on the agenda to update the rules and regs, and that'll be, that will encompass the waivers.
Right.
Process. Uh, but I just want everybody to be cautious that I still think we need to put some requirements in that we may need to waive, from a leverage standpoint.
Right, correct.
You, you, you may want to, again, you get a development you don't like and.
Yeah, I know what you mean, so if you, please, if they make the waivers for this one, they're just going to give waivers, they're going to ask for waivers for other things, so is that what you mean by the leverage kind of idea of it?
Well, you still make them strong.
Strong, right.
Right, so that, you know, if, if the situation arises, they have to show to you that there's this, they need to, um, there's a reason why they should be asking for a waiver, so, you know, but you decide on what you want to see, what you want to see for these minor roads, you know, these, these three or four-lot subdivision. What is that design you want to see?
Okay, we have two sets of minutes in our packet. Uh, I saw them somewhere, shuffled the files so many times now.
I would move to approve the minutes of July 13th.
Second. As drafted, no changes?
As drafted, no changes.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve the July 13th minutes. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, actually.
Maybe he's not there.
Me, Jack, and Nora.
Yeah, we're.
That was our last meeting. Yeah, we had a. Uh, and then we also have minutes for May 11th. Did you get a chance to review those, Nora?
I did. I would move that we approve the minutes of May 11th and no changes.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Both the minutes for July 13th and May 11th have been approved. Uh, any correspondence, Mark?
Uh, no.
And.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Um, just to, you know, clarify any sort of like public perception, I'm curious to know, what have you seen as far as any sort of, um, news or potential plans for the hospital fight?
Um, I haven't seen anything yet.
So they haven't?
Well, I have never seen any plan. We had a conversation with them March or April, um, about them possibly putting together an alternative based on what, um... might be allowed under the various overlays and the base zone, and trying to pick what might be economically viable to do. If they can, you know, find, you know, whether it's tenants or developers or, you know.
And so what, what direction were they leaning?
Toward what would be considered more of a mixed use project, with some housing, some commercial, some office. But again, it was just a very preliminary discussion, so there's been no plans or anything.
Have they given any update on their appeal?
I have not talked to them about that, I have no idea.
Mr. Chairman, I just have, I have one comment, and this is, don't anybody take this personally. Do we have a cutoff on all these changes that are being made to something that's on the agenda to begin? Seems like we're getting them later and later and closer to the meeting, that I don't have a time that I feel.
I think every.
To review.
Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, like every two years, we make an official vote to say 10 days.
Yes.
And then it slowly trickles to like, they push it, and they push it, and they push it, so.
But then they have to go to the next meeting, in my opinion, or it's just not going to vote on.
Is this like, so Kreske, this is going on for what, a year? I'm not sure.
Yeah, but I'm more concerned, Jack, about, we get stuff from them today, the day of the meeting, or the day before the meeting, and we're not able to really dig into it, but they are allowed, they have been allowed to send it because it's on the agenda for that week's meeting.
Now, doesn't Concom actually take a vote on whether they want to look at plans if they've been submitted the same day? I don't know if that's something, if planning board implements, maybe they'll be a little bit more hesitant to delay.
I just don't understand why we can't establish a deadline and make them stick to the deadline.
Yeah.
So what.
Hang on, hang on, we're going to let Kathy go. I asked her a question about 20 minutes ago.
So what your deadline is, is for a submittal for an agenda item. So if they're submitting something for the agenda, that is a 10 day deadline. You don't have one for something that's just been continued. It's really you're at your discretion if you want to accept it or not, or if you want to set, you know, a timeline of two days or three days or.
So I think for us to take official action, we need to put that on the agenda to do that. But I'm happy to say that on our next meeting, if you guys wanted to discuss and vote on Tuesday at the close of business. If we don't have it by Tuesday, the close of business, to physically be in the packet, or whenever. I'm not saying that's.
No, I understand, yeah, I would like to be put on the agenda.
Yes.
So, Kathy, if you could put that on the agenda for our next meeting to discuss, what are we going to call that? Deadlines for, deadlines for submittals?
Yeah, for additional submittals.
All right, it's not fair to Kathy, it's not fair to, it's not fair to anyone.
I mean, we had, we had three sets of.
Oh, they all did it today?
Yeah, today, that's right. So, I mean, in all fairness, you know, you had some productive discussions, but you did not take a vote on the, what was submitted for today. Now, sometimes it might be just some minor changes, and it may be perfectly fine. So I just want you to think about how flexible, how flexible or not.
Flexible, but with a deadline.
Yes.
And I think it's one thing when we were COVID online, and we were getting them emailed, and everything was on, you know, the computer anyways. But now where they're printing out things and having to bring them to the meeting, it does make it a lot more difficult.
It's going to be a lot of work to do this.
Could we also bring the planning board goals back? I know, I thought we were going to do that once a month.
Yeah, I thought we were, I think we talked about putting them on this week, so they got overlooked, so. But I would ask that they not be at the next meeting, because I don't know if I'm going to be here, or if I'm here physically, or mentally, I will be here. I'm having major back surgery next Friday.
So could I ask that, and everybody agree that we do that for the first meeting in September? Because I was by the office and talked to Kathy that if we don't have a lot going on, we may forego our second meeting in August, if that's the case. So it's just the only time of the year that we do that, because typically it's a slow before fall stuff happens again. So I don't want to keep kicking the can down the road, but.
No, that's fine.
First in September, if you're okay with that. So make an announcement that our next meeting is August 10th, 2023, here at the Lakeville Police Station. There is no other business that comes before the board tonight. So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.